Trying to get laptop set up here. Hopefully we don't have that crazy echo. Alright, there we go.
Give me one more minute. Is Shay coming?
Uh, yeah, actually, oh, she's here.
I'm gonna see her on here.
She's logged in, her picture is just not, her video's not up.
I see.
Good stuff. Cancelled the drive to Truckertree? Come on. We're gonna get rid of most of it, but.
Alright, why don't we, uh, call the order then? Record everyone's who's here. You have any citizens online?
Um, I believe Kristen is here from Little.
Yes, hi, Kristen LaJoy here.
Hi, Kristen. You just tagging along, or you have some comments?
Uh, I do have something just to, to bring up whenever it fits in your agenda.
Now's the time.
Alright, um, Patrick LaJoy is our league safety officer, he deals with our field development projects, he's been at a previous meeting with me as well. We have some money in little league funds that we have to spend down. And we've been receiving from some of our coaches, some safety concerns in regards to the fencing up at Blonders baseball fields. A lot of it is kind of sagging, bowing out, it's kicking out around the bottom, creating some, some hazards for our players as they're going after balls and stuff. We would like to try and get the fencing repaired, Patrick did reach out and I apologize, he couldn't be on the meeting today, he's working, but he did reach out, he received three quotes from three different companies. We discussed it as a board last evening as far as how, how we felt about it, but it is Parks and Rec property, obviously, so. We ultimately, excuse me, he received quotes from Custom Fence, Eagle Fence, and Sabre Fence ranging from eight thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars and fourteen cents to ten thousand nine hundred twenty dollars. Eagle Fence was the middle of the road piece at nine thousand eight hundred fifty dollars for the total, however, per per linear foot that they would be replacing, they were the least expensive. They were going to be replacing a little bit more fencing than the other two companies. We would love to go, I mean, obviously, we would love if Parks and Rec could help us with the cost of it. But even if you can't, we would love to go forward with trying to get that fencing fixed and replaced. They're replacing the, the mesh, and I don't think any of the poles needed replacing, it was just the the chain link itself that they would be doing, but it was on both fields at Blonders to completely repair all of the sagging and bowing. Funky stuff.
Now, Kristen, just a heads up, um, if you do repair the fence, you're gonna wanna have the coaches stop getting into it with the kids, that's actually.
Definitely contributing right now, so. Absolutely.
Um, I think I emailed Patrick, I don't think we have a lot of money really to help you guys, because something like that would come out of the capital, you know, account, which we have to do a year in advance, so. For us to come up with, you know, money to assist you guys for next month will be great, let me call off.
Kristen, is there any issues with like, security or safety?
Safety wise, the, the condition, current condition of the fence is definitely a concern. I know Paul, I think it was Paul, did some work to try and tie back some of what was kicking out and bending into the field. But it's, it's a Band-Aid. I mean, it makes it as, as well as we can right now, but there are still some, some valid safety concerns, we've got a foul ball that gets hit and kids going after it, they're they're stepping and tripping on fence that's into the field of play and potentially loose metal at the bottom. Where the chain link is not finished.
Is this something where we can like, cut those pieces on the bottom, so it's not curling, and then put padding on the bottom of it?
Based on what the fence company has passed along in their opinions, no. It is, it's far gone enough at this point that trying to cut anything out and, and just patch it in would just essentially be another Band-Aid. Because it's, I mean, it's sagging from the top down, so any of that is likely going to continue. So I don't know that that's necessarily an option, I mean, it would be a temporary option, but then, you know, their opinion and all four companies he spoke with said the same thing, we only got three quotes, one of them is dragging their feet, but all four, four companies that he spoke with said verbatim, just about the same thing as far as Band-Aid versus fixing it properly.
Yeah, I'm not referring to like, Band-Aid and then staying with it for another ten years and thinking of if a kid is potentially injured because of this, is there something we can do until we move forward with fixing the fence?
Yeah, we, we actually brought in room because there's a low spot to raise it up, and then Paul, which was mentioned, zip tied it back to the, the bottom pole of the fence, so it's not hanging out loose.
Okay.
Because it's got a curve to it, it is kind of projecting out.
Okay. Alright, so I guess, um, we don't have the funding at this point, I don't know what baseball wants to do, whether you guys wanna move forward on your own, or if you're gonna have to wait till.
We do have the funding, I, we, we figured we would ask and see where Parks and Rec was at, but we do have the funding and are more than willing to pay for it ourselves if need be, if that's what it takes to get it fixed. I don't necessarily wanna push it off for a year to wait for, you know, the capital fund there for it to maybe be a possible project that gets done by that, and then have it get worse, or have something happen. So, I mean, we do have the funding and we're more than willing to pay for it ourselves.
I might be able to contribute like, a couple hundred, it's not gonna be a significant amount. For the MyRec software, they actually gave us a discount this year due to COVID, it said on the bill, uh, due to lost revenues due to COVID-19, so they actually cut us a deal on our yearly membership. I could put that money towards it, but it, you know, only talked to me three hundred bucks.
So, I, I guess, question to you Scott, is this something where, um, we can reimburse in some manner? In six months, eight months, whenever we have a new thing, or is this something that you can't really write up after it's already done?
Yeah, because it would probably likely come out of the capital account, and that has to get approved by town council. Now, through them, then cutting a check to reimburse little league for work that's already done. We would have to go out to bid or get the quote, you know, come out of that account with the money. I have to talk to the finance director, because I also have to double check to make sure he's not gonna require us throughout the bid, I think we're under the amount of bids, fifteen thousand, you'd have to go with big. If it's over five, they just want three quotes minimum.
Okay, anyone else have any other comments or suggestions?
It's a safety issue and you know, they're willing to pay for it. I mean, especially the safety issue aspect of it. It's gonna have to be done before someone gets hurt.
We've done everything to make it to the last two seasons, but definitely probably should be addressed.
Right, but if they wanna address it now, so that they're ready for whatever season we may end up with next.
That is the challenge.
One, one quick question for the minutes, I just missed, um, I think I went by too fast, which field was it?
Blonders.
Blonders.
Blonders, okay, thank you.
Both baseball fields at Blonders.
Okay, thanks.
Let me just, we would wanna, you know, relay to the coaches if it does get fixed, not do the hitting grid windows, that's actually the cause of the bowing.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, sorry, we can't, uh, but it's, it's great that you brought it to our attention, and, um, you know, we'll see if we can, uh, help you out in some other way at some point in the future.
Okay, uh, now, I know, Scott, you mentioned you wanted, you needed to check with finance director and everything as far as quotes and bids and everything, is that still apply if we are paying for it out of our pocket because it's town property, I assume, correct?
Yeah, and then, um, I just gotta make sure whatever company you go with, I think you have to have insurance on file for them. Let's see if it's an issue because it's under fifteen thousand, and you did get three bids, but I just wanna, you know, confirm with her.
Okay, yeah, and Patrick has those three quotes that he can, he said he can send along to you, that way you've got them on file if you need them too, so you've got it. So I will let him know to send that along to you, and then we will go from there.
Yeah, sounds good.
Alright, thank you very much all, I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Kristen. Okay, onto informational items.
So, town passed a new liquor ordinance, it'll be taking effect soon, allows alcoholic beverages on town property. And there's a process, they would need approval either from myself or the commission, and then they could take that to the chief of the league, chief of police to continue the permit process. On the liquor permit, to actually, uh, you know, have consumption on one of our properties. I'm gonna attach that here, and we'll probably be able to pass that, so it's like twenty-one days before it goes into effect. The next, the DPH released new sports recommendations, their recommendations, not the guidelines, but they are, we did see the guidelines as well, to kind of align with the DPH recommendations. This is all coming from the whole situation with football and CIA seat. Might see more changes as we approach basketball season as well, we have to work closely at the indoor sports that are coming up. So my word is, it needs guidance, the guidance is attached, it does say to try and push the basketball season to the spring unless modifications can be made, so people wearing a mask while playing. So it's something to keep on the radar, because it could be coming pretty quickly as they push basketball seasons and things, the guidelines.
Okay.
Next, I think, is just a people minute from last minute.
You need a motion, Scott, I can motion.
Second. Oh, Ken, you're on mute, Ken.
All favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Director's report.
I'll make this quick, um, so we've finished all of our fall work, all the fields have been fertilized, we already did our seeding. We're waiting on soil samples, so to determine if we need to do any line applications this fall. We focused all our efforts this year, you know, more so on depth of field to get that back to where it needs to be, we've seen great results. Talking with Mike, he wants to focus on Cranial Field next, because the condition at field it should be in, you know, much better shape as it has irrigation system there. He actually wants to try possibly doing another heat control application possibly this fall, because that's one of the issues on that field, there's a lot of weed. And he also wants to possibly try and do dormant seeding on that field, on that way in the spring, we can hit the ground running, for that seed will pop. Because there's no reason why that field shouldn't be, you know, it's full and lush, it's that, that's the field, it does have the irrigation system there. Colonel Edred Park, we just rented out for a wedding, and we did kind of spruce up the, the depot, we brought in some fresh mulch from Public Works. Because they actually helped the wedding ceremony at the depot. We had in Crush Stone, and it was spread at the boat launch, it was becoming a hazard. And then we've also had a number of residents express they wanna have more stone dust added to the track that's there. A lot of people have been using it in the morning to walk, and they're starting to fade into the grass, so do something to put on the radar, there's one of our projects coming up. Swimming season's over, so the lake areas are scheduled to be renewed, I believe they're gonna do that in the next few weeks. Softball started, and baseball games have started, and are going well so far. All the other sports have canceled, programs have started going well, we have both virtual and in-person, actually, our cooking classes do inventory virtually than I did in person, because we don't have a limit of how many kids, you know, you can fit in the kitchen, so you can fit as many as not as many, or you can take more kids than you would if we were to be in person, because there's no safety issues. And in-person classes have been going as well, so luckily the schools haven't closed down, but we've limited, you know, the programs in schools as much as possible. Most of our programs, I think, except one or two are in the senior center or the community center, but we don't have to worry about when the school starts, you know, if it closes down. Can't say they're rescheduling classes. Then the event magazine just went out, and all the park rec, and that is fairly accurate. Last one was very confusing, because we sent it out, and then COVID kind of messed everything up. So we've gotten a lot of questions, so it's nice that all our information is correct in the booklet. Our plan has started, so we're finally full staff, and then we got all caught up, and we're actually, you know, planning events, and we're making progress again with the plans. And Judge Cranial Waterline, we're working on finishing up permit, and I've been talking with Doug at Pride and Co. about scheduling, so. Yeah, what's the school, we're gonna try and do on a Wednesday, but there's no school session, and I know we paid Thursday morning in hopes that everything's ready for Thursday afternoon, so it won't disrupt the school, uh, too much, all of the construction work.
Okay. Excellent, any comments, folks?
Is the training stuff for Cranial that's all included in the bid? Yeah, yeah, so I think he wants to try it, have, you know, added those things, I think it's Yeah, so you might wait another, you know, few weeks, so it really gets cold, and sure it doesn't pop now and then die off. So try, you know, try and do that, but whether, you know, with the gap to fill.
Scott, since we're talking about the fields and Tom is there, I know, I had asked you a couple weeks ago to borrow the dugout sign for the the seniors, the soccer seniors, but after chasing around, I don't know if Russ mentioned to you, Tom said that that sign got destroyed. So, it is no longer, so just the, the ledger that goes over the soccer dugout is, is been destroyed, Tom, I don't know if the guest sign was also destroyed, but I couldn't find that anywhere either.
I'm wondering if Russell took them, because he did ask me actually to ask, Tom, I think you made them.
The ledger ones, um, was all broke. The guest one, I don't think I ever saw that one.
Alright, so you can ask. If you want, you're able to fix it.
There were a lot of people very sad about that, Tom, your, your handiwork is is missed, it was something the girls were looking forward to kind of passing the torch on, so.
No, I'll make another one, then.
Hey, anyone else? If you can get a motion to approve the director's report?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we, we don't have any financial reports, right?
No, we will be approaching budget season, I think, shortly, usually November, December time, so. It'll be coming up.
Any old business, folks? No follow-ups? Okay, new business, high school scoreboard.
Alright, so, I've been talking with Wayne, and the high school is been looking to upgrade the scoreboard at the football field, since they just moved it to the turf. And they wanna give us the old scoreboard, and actually, Wayne will be able to put in, to the bid, they'll, the company that's gonna put in the new scoreboard will actually install the old scoreboard at Cranial Field for us for free. As one of the bids, so it's a pretty good deal, we're gonna get a pretty decent scoreboard, it's in much better shape than the one there, so. Obviously, you just need the existing poles, which are already there, and we'll remove the old one, leave it, and we'll have to dispose of it, but they'll install the old high school scoreboard at Cranial Forest, so it would be great.
Nice.
Great.
And for playground safety, I just finished my twelve-hour safety inspector course followed by a four-hour virtual online course, um, on Zoom. So I have until December twentieth to take my test, I'm studying, and after that, we can implement a safety inspection program, it will help our liability, and make sure that all our playgrounds are ready to be.
Nice, good work.
Next spring, we get started on that.
You haven't passed yet.
Fully confident.
Lot of hours, lot of math.
We believe in you. All good.
Alec has been listening to me, and then, you know, from the next year, which is coming, because I don't know how he's still awake, because a lot of math, like, X is the axis of the swing plus thirty divided by two.
Oh, you gotta do math?
Oh, yeah.
I do that, is that it?
A lot of formulas. Thought I was done with that, but I guess not. Truck or treat, I just put this on as an update, because last week, we didn't know where we stand. We only had two trunks, and we actually decided to cancel this morning, we had nine trunks registered. And instead, we're going to do candy bar bingo, we're gonna have bingo in the parking lot here, that way we can get, where some of us can, we have tons of it. A lot of people wanted to donate money or candy, but no one wanted to have a trunk this year. In my office, it's small candy, there's no way to really get really good, so we're gonna do bingo, and I'm also gonna do a scarecrow contest as well. We're gonna see if we can get exposure to the scene in your office if we, you know, hold it here, people know where we're at.
So how, I mean, how many people are you looking to have come to the parking lot?
Um, so, we're in the early stages, we're planning, if there's a lot of people that wanna participate, we might do, uh, different blocks. So, we're planning on Saturday the twenty-fourth. Um, if we get a lot of people that wanna do it, we might do, you know, hour and a half intervals. So, you know, however many cars we could fit in the parking lot, if it's sixty-five, first sixty-five will be, you know, the first hour. You know, filter out, then the second hour will be another sixty-five. Um, and we'll give out bingo prizes and candy bags to all the kids. And then, you know, still do some sort of following event, you know, like in the trunk or treat.
Nice.
Since you put that post out today, Scott, have you gotten people in, calling in and chucking on the bingo, or is there interest?
It seems like there's a lot of interest, um, no one's really called yet, but there's been a lot of comments on Facebook asking why we canceled and how they're saying that they're excited about the bingo, so. Hopefully, well, we figured we'll use, you know, paper bingo boards as, we will not collect anything back. And we'll give the kids their bags, so. And then with the donations, uh, we reached out to anyone that's donated, and they said we use the money towards prizes for their, for their, for that.
Thanks for getting creative with this, I know, uh, this has been a, a rough and challenging year for, for different events like that, so nice job in kind of getting creative to keep people engaged and do it in a way that makes everybody feel safe and comfortable.
Well, we figured the Easter Bunny Trail was something very simple, but it, it meant a lot to a lot of people, because, I mean, we got a lot of comments, people that, you know, they're one-year-old, two-year-old. Couldn't go to the lawn and take a picture with Easter Bunny, but they could stand outside and take a picture with Easter Bunny through the glass window, and so they still have that memory.
Nice.
Actually, one thing that's not on here, just a heads up, I think the Tri-Town Trail might be getting put potentially under our control. And they essentially need a home, um, because they're not allowed to own land or evements with their, uh, nonprofit status. I think the mayor's gonna ask conservation, you know, I told him, out of respect, ask them first, because it's strictly trails. Uh, we do have trails under our jurisdiction as well, but the Tri-Town Trail wants to be, I think, under us. I think we have to get control, it's still in the early workings, but we'll probably come to, um, our next meeting or, you know, probably add permission to.
Who would be, uh, in charge of taking care of it then?
Um, we'll have to work, work all that out, I think it's like more, you know, land ownership type of thing, and then, you know, if they do run out of money, we would possibly have to, you know, step in and help. But they have a huge volunteer base and they've been blazing the trails, they're pretty much, I think, all the way down to the Clark Farm, they've been putting up signs, building bridges. Almost gonna get the building inspected out there, then inspect the current temporary bridge and anything that's going to build a more permanent one.
So now, where is it left off now with, um, connecting, because we have the issue with wetlands and all that stuff and going around CLMP and, or whatever called now? Groton Utilities?
Yeah, so they have an alternative route, um, if Groton Utilities won't let them through the watershed, which I don't believe they will. Um, but actually, Groton's now, now that they've seen the ledger portion of the trail, they had a bunch of people from Groton walk it. Um, it seems like Groton's now on board with it, uh, more so than they were before. Um, so, I gotta reach out to Groton, because I think they have, they have a trails group under the Park and Recreation Park in there. And they're asking to reach out to the director in Groton to see how they set that up and run things and how, how it works. If it's been successful, so. Maybe one of the next steps is, you know, get input from Broton.
And what's the projected timeline for that being done?
Um, well, I just talked to the mayor today about it, and I think he's gonna, might send a conservation commission, you know, tonight. Until it's, it's been fairly soon, um, that they might come under us. But I don't think they can put the evements under the Tri-Town Trail Association. And because of the type of nonprofit they are, they would have to reason that for five or one week, so. I would give it less than. I think they would like us to take control of their, you know, the fundraising funding that they have, essentially come under us. Also, have you own and attend, you know, the town entity.
Okay. Anyone have any comments? Concerns?
No, I mean, just to reiterate what Lou said, it's amongst everything else going on, Scott, you guys are doing a tremendous job keeping things moving, and even with being short-staffed up until just recently, I think it's been great.
It's, uh, it's been a huge help having, being back to full staff. We've noticed it from Monica, like, I'm actually, my whiteboard, I can see it well, so.
Alright. Well, motion to adjourn then? Or can I have a motion to adjourn, I should say?
Motion.
Motion.
All in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Alright, a good night, guys, thanks, Scott.
Thanks for the, have a good one.
You guys, sir.